Seventeenth day of August 2023. Please rise if you're able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. We have Deputy Clerk Kim Otati here. Kim, can I ask you to call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman?
Here.
Councilwoman McComber?
Here.
Councilman Martell?
Here.
Councilman Boobie?
Here.
Councilman Skiboni?
Present.
Okay, so everybody's here. And we're gonna start today with the review of the draft agenda for the meeting of August 22nd. That would be next Tuesday, right here at Town Hall, as well as via Zoom. And it's an evening meeting, so it's 6:00 PM start. There are only two public hearings. The first is to accept an open space deed in connection. I think I should say deed. Public hearing to accept open space in connection with the plan, residential plan and density incentive subdivision map of Zurabi, family trust site approved by the Southampton Town Planning Board on March 10th, 2022. Does it need to say deed or?
It should say dedication, except, well, let me see the first.
I'm not gonna worry about it.
Yeah, right. No, it's pretty clear.
It is open space. Second, public hearings consider the wastewater treatment projects proposed for 2023 Community Preservation Fund 20% Water Quality Improvement Plan. Any questions about the public hearings? Hearing none. We'll move on to Town Board Resolutions. 949 accepts grant of conservation easement in connection with Lewis Road PRD. Did we get everything resolved on that? We're good?
Development rights, right? We were going with that.
Yeah, that's different.
Conservation easement.
That's right.
I just want, there was some questions about tax maps and stuff, so.
Right, right.
Nine, Cindy, you're next.
950 of 2023, accept deeds of dedication in connection with the Lewis Road PRD.
996.
996 or 966?
966. Authorized supervisor to sign contract with EV Connect for charging station management system at Hong Kong Beach.
We sorted that out too with?
Yes.
With the Department? Okay. Perfect. 440110, authorized extension of groundwater monitoring agreement for the Lewis Road PRD golf course in Quogue. Execution of that. 44016, authorized purchase and installation of roofing products and services for Roof Services of New York with Tecta America Company LLC using Omnia Partners contract. 44013, authorized supervisor to execute a contract with First Coastal Corporation for professional consulting services. It relates to the North Sea Beach Colony Beach Erosion Control District Nourishment Project pursuant to Town Law 202B. Cindy?
44048, authorized supervisor to sign a contract with State University of New York at Stony Brook School of Health Professions.
43988, authorizes the supervisor to execute a contract with Louis K. McClain Associates PC for professional services related to improvements at Red Creek Park in Hampton Days. 44015, declare item surplus and authorize disposal of vehicles. 44014, recall on aman resolution 23-2023-833, authorize supervisor to sign agreement to lease the premises known as 271 Flanders Road Riverside, New York to Long Island Head Start Development Services, Inc. and to the Children's Museum of the East End. 44043 is amending the 23 budget for various departments. 44005, authorizes the town to reimburse NYMER, the deductible for bodily injury and property damage claims. Cindy?
44004, waive a portion of the showmobile fees for the San General fees in the Hamptons.
Anybody else co-sponsor say that one? I'll go on as a co-sponsor then. Do you have to recuse yourself on that? 44057, appoints Alexander Sikorsky to Animal Control Officer One, position in public safety. 44056, appoints Dana Padon to Animal Control Officer One, position in public safety. 43642, appoints Tristan Allen to sanitation helper position in municipal works, waste management division. 44042, authorize the acceptance of funds from a New York State eminent domain account for property acquired for the Southampton, Bridgehampton Storm Drainage Improvement Project. And then we have some add-ons. A bunch, 10 more. Tommy John, you got the first?
Well, they are actually, there are add-ons with multiple sponsors on it, but I am like a co-sponsor on all of them. You wanna read them individually? Like the first one, you're the lead sponsor, but I am on there. These were not approved yesterday.
All right, so I'll read the first.
And then John is the lead sponsor on the second.
So you just wanna go by the?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go by the.
All right, so 43876 elects to consider formal zone change from CR 200 to multifamily to facilitative development of 34 units of affordable rental housing at 1100 Majors Path North Sea. Were we waiting on some comment?
They did a, they did a whole presentation with the CDC. It was a two-hour presentation.
And the CAC was okay with?
They were okay with moving forward to an elect.
Okay. That's good to hear. All right, John?
They definitely want more information, but they understand that that's the only way they're gonna get it.
The moment we'll call the process starts.
All right, John, you got the next?
Town Board Resolution ID 43965, a notice of public hearing to consider aquatic habitat restoration and non-point source abatement and control projects proposed for 2023 Community Preservation Fund CPF 20% Water Quality Improvement Plan funding.
All right, Tommy John?
43975, a resolution of adoption, amending Chapter 164-6.5 penalties to increase the penalty for hazardous, for hazardous materials. This is stored in residential properties. We had a public hearing on it. 43976, this is resolution of adopting, amending Chapter 164-6.4 hazardous accumulations to enhance enforcement ability. There was one addition that I'd like to call the board's attention to. That is letter E in section two, letter E, number four. In addition to the exemptions, it will not apply to agriculture and farmland properties.
So you're adding, that's not in this, but you're adding that?
That's an exemption. It's, it was added to it as an exemption.
Yeah, for the, for the storage and accumulation of.
Right. So farms are gonna be.
Yep, they're gonna be storing some.
Oh, that's the number four, exemption number four.
Horse menu or whatever.
This section shall not apply to agriculture and farmland properties.
Right, right.
The fourth exemption, okay.
Nitrate.
Okay. All right, John, you heard the next one?
Town Board, am I on the right one? Town Board Resolution ID 44009, the 2023 second notice to bid for Tiana Life Saving Station Restoration.
44012, this is to amend the 2023 Department of Land Management Building and Zoning Commercial Fee Schedule.
This is to add a charge for EV charging stations.
Yeah, it should be added to that.
Kim, you got that?
Got it.
44017, authorize a partial waiver for fire marshal fees for the 2023 Hampton Classic.
Town Board Resolution ID 44018, authorize partial waiver of police fees for the 2023 Classic, Hampton Classic Horse Show.
ID number 440.
Wait, one second. Can I, can I go on as co-sponsors on both of those? 44017 and 44018.
Got it.
All right, go ahead, Tommy John.
44053, to authorize supervisor to execute a computer use agreement with M1 Security Solutions in furtherance of the professional services consulting contract.
Cindy, you're the next.
Resolution of adoption, creating new chapter 314 entitled Moratorium on Battery Energy Storage Systems as per Section 330-162.21 of the Southampton Town Code.
Can we go now? Can I be the lead sponsor on this one?
Sure.
As I was with the public hearing? Kim, you got that?
Yes.
All right, any questions on any of those? And no other questions on the agenda? Draft agenda? Okay, so we're good to publish? Okay, so we're gonna, we're ahead of schedule maybe.
Did the best we can.
Not bad. And you guys are all here and ready, so we might as well take you early. So we're gonna move on to our. Janice is on her way up.
I just called and I don't know, she's, she wants to see if I can find it.
Yeah, because it's important that she be part of this.
All right, do you wanna stall a little bit with some updates?
Yeah, we could do that.
Do the updates, yeah.
Yeah.
Who wants to?
I just called, she just. I'll go. Last night, we had an informal public hearing in the Town Board Room with representatives from the Village of North Haven, and they presented their plans on a park for Level 80 Powell property. We heard from the public. There are some questions about the development of that particular parcel. And so the town of Southampton, as we are the, we own the fee and title of both parcels that this park is being developed on. We had a public hearing last night, and it was good. A lot of people came out, good ideas. We are going to be having another one on Thursday next week, the 24th, at 6 o'clock in North Haven Village Mall. And then the Village of North Haven is going to adopt, or they're going to go into their hearing and their processes. So it's an interesting way that the two municipalities work together to develop this park over there.
Anyone else?
Last Saturday, Councilman Skiboni and I attended a meeting with the Tiana Beach Erosion Control District. And the Village of Quogue, Mayor of Quogue was there. There was a lot of residents there. Jim and Kelly Doyle did a presentation on FIMP and what's needed to proceed. I think it started out a little questionable, but towards the end, I think everybody kind of caught on and was on board. And it got to the point where they said, well, wait a second, you need everybody to sign up before we can proceed. And we said, yes. And they said, well, are you gonna have a list of who the holdouts are? Because I think they're ready to like knock contours to make it happen. But it was very, it was very informative. Aram Traturian was there as well, went through the whole program and the plan and answered a lot of questions that people had, and I think alleviated a lot of concerns that people had.
Good.
And, you know, it was, it was a very worthwhile, very well-attended event.
It was a nice arc of realization.
Yeah. You could see it kind of.
Yeah, pretty savvy group. They know that this is to their benefit.
These are all ocean.
And all of ours, really.
These are all oceanfront property owners, so they know.
Jim, when are we scheduled to actually get to sand now?
Right now, it's more, it's more like 2025, fall of 2025. But what we talked about was if we do acquire the easements, and they can't, US, the Army Corps cannot start the project until all the easements are obtained. So that's kind of the point of the conversation on Saturday morning was if, if we get full cooperation by all the property owners, if we get the easement signed earlier, we may be able to move it up, depending on the availability of the Corps and the dredging. Because originally, they were talking about more in the 2024, late 2024 fall. They tried to do the work, then they obviously didn't want to do the work during the summertime. So it'll either be scheduled for, you know, at the earliest, it would be the fall of 2024 if somehow we were able to obtain all the easements. And the only way we're gonna do that is if we get voluntary.
Compliance.
Execution by, right, compliance by everybody. If not, then we're talking probably at this point, fall of 2025. You know, if we have to go through eminent domain, you know, the problem we have is that we have one judge in Suffolk County who handles all the eminent domain proceedings, and he also has a matrimonial calendar, you know, Judge Leo, so he's very busy. So, you know, that, that'll, that'll just take time. But Kelly did a great job in the presentation side, and she was really terrific. And Adam was, we kind of, the three of us kind of, you know, played off each other a little bit, and I thought.
It was good.
Handled a lot of the questions.
Originally, we had the pressure that we were holding up Montauk, right? Downtown Montauk, which is a desperate, so they've peeled that off now. That's actually happening potentially this year. In the winter of this year. I was with Army Corps folks yesterday. That's really exciting.
Right, they had a very, you know, small amount of easements to obtain, but yeah, sure.
They were able to tie in with the FIMI.
Right.
The Fire Island Purchase Endless Project, so they, when that ocean dredge comes out, they're gonna dispatch it to Montauk and do the Montauk piece.
Right.
So it's no longer, they're not being held up by us.
Right, and one of the questions from.
They have easements already there.
They, yeah.
Yeah, there was a small amount.
A little bit of work they still have to do there, but they're expected to have everything in place for.
A lot of it is public lands that were, you know, they're involved there, I believe, but.
I think, I think there's gonna be some holdouts. I think, you know, there were some people that didn't like the idea that scraping is gone forever. There were some people that didn't like the idea that the easements are forever and, you know, run with the land, and they thought it should be more like a 10- or 20-year easement.
Yeah. Questions about?
And that was the realization, is that once the Army Corps gets in to re-nourish the beach, then they are going to keep the beach re-nourished. And those easements need to be in place.
Right, there was questions about that and potential costs moving forward.
You know, and then they was, they wanted, they wanted us to look into building like a two-foot seawall on the bayside so that the dune road doesn't flood from the bay.
One gentleman asked.
And, you know, so I told them if they, if they would reach out to Councilman Boobie, he would just alleviate all their fears and tell them they won't have any property in 20 years, so.
So that's the whole, that's the irony of, you know, some of the pushback is if we don't get the easement, there's no work. If there's no work, there's no property there 30 years from now. It's all gone. It's just, so the part that they're worried about, the Corps being able to come back and re-nourish in the future, wouldn't even be there.
Right. I think most of the people got that. They, you know, these are very sophisticated people, and they, we also were to realize that we were able to show them that really easements that we will be acquiring here are pretty much from the foot of, the toe of the dune out to the high water, mean high watermark. So it's already encumbered by a public right-of-way easement.
Did they talk about sea level rise in any respect as it regards to?
No.
We really didn't get into the science.
It was all kind of a moot point.
Yeah, they had questions about how they were gonna contour the, the work, the sand, the dunes and whatnot. And Aaron, Aaron was good about, you know, being able to talk to them about that. And he also realized, you know, that, listen, you know, you go to East Sagaponak and Bridgehampton, you know, those homeowners are paying a lot of their own monies to do what the Corps is gonna do here.
They do wanna know who's gonna pay that 15% going forward.
I'm sure they do.
Well, it depends on where they are. In Quogue, it's the village residents are paying.
But they wanted to know if it would be a full town or if it would just be on like an erosion control district type setting.
For us, everything else, everything else is in ECDs, except for maybe one small section of West Hampton, which right now isn't scheduled to get any sand. But the places that are scheduled to get sand and re-nourishment are all in ECDs.
So it'd be the ECD is funding that 15%.
The ECD is funding the 15%.
Which is, this is a piece of land in West Hampton between the villages, between West Hampton Beach and West Hampton Dunes.
It's technically part of the project, but it's, it's not, there's nothing happening there in the design. So they're not getting anything, so they don't, we don't get any easements there right now.
Right, right now, yeah. There's, there's areas of West Hampton Beach that we're not.
It's not a barrier.
Right, so it's not a barrier or something.
Dunes area they're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, well, you know, that, that used to be a, that was an inlet at one time.
Well, that's all.
Fill it in every year.
Right, that beach, there, because of the breach and all that, the beach is completely owned by the state of New York. That, that whole beach in West Hampton Beach Dunes is all state of New York, so they can.
Pike's Inlet at the time.
They don't need any, they don't need to acquire easements there.
It's worth looking into the legal side of that because they established West Hampton Dunes as a result of.
Other, other breach.
Of monies to repair and to restore that area.
Right.
So, and I don't know where that actually ended up, but I know they benefited significantly from that.
Right, oh, sure.
But I don't know what the.
Well, as I said, the state of New York owns all the beachfront there now, so they don't need, if they are to do any work there, they don't need to acquire easements.
All right, so you guys, we stalled longer than we needed to. We have Janice here, so.
It was an accident on the highway.
What happened?
There was an accident on camera 3.
Oh, no.
Oh, I just missed it. But I'm glad you're okay.
All right, good. So Janice, I don't know where you wanna stand.
Well, I'll just quickly, quickly introduce this because there's been a, there's been sort of a lot of talk going on in the West Hampton area about this particular proposed project. And I, kind of rumor mill's sort of sprung up. So I asked Janice if you guys could come down here and sort of describe exactly what it is that's going on there. And we'll take it from there and where, where you are and describe what you're proposing.
Yes, so the applicants, you may recall, and good morning to everyone. Thank you for having me. They had, we had a prior work session a while ago when the new owners came in and said, what would you like to see here? What, what do you, you know, are there any opportunities for us to, you know, do anything here? So we, we did mull around, actually, you may recall, like doing an opportunity zoning for these sand lines to move out of mining operations into different uses that are sustainable. So we, this particular property is in the core of the Pine Barrens though, so it's a different animal. And so, so John Schneider and George Duke are representing the applicants, and you guys can come up here.
Okay, yeah, you're.
And, and I think it's better to hear it from them, what they wanna do. At the same time, they, after that work session, we really didn't go forward with that opportunity zones, which is too many things happening at once here. And they've since applied for a grade adjustment, and I think we just wanna understand what's going on with this grade adjustment? What is this whole process about?
They want a grade adjustment?
Meaning to fill in this, so I think it's best to hear from them.
Would that be subject to some sort of DEC regulations?
It's a P, DEC Part 360 permit, and so, but that permit process had a public portion that we attended and heard some things, and some community members heard some things. So I think we, we called them up and said, why don't you come in? And we'd rather hear it directly from you than secondhand from a public works.
Where's the property located?
It's on, on Summit Boulevard, on Old Country Road, North Summit Boulevard. There's like a railroad area. I'm sorry, I didn't bring a map.
I think I know, I think I know.
Is it one of those? Yeah, do you want a, a map?
I can bring it up on the computer, actually, I'll do that.
Oh.
Okay.
How many acres total?
39 acres.
39, something like that, yeah.
And it's a.
And I think the pit is.
Maybe just wanna go through introductions and get a degree.
Yeah, so, yeah, I could give a, just a contextual background.
Yeah, I've seen, why don't you introduce yourself?
Yeah, so my name is George Duke, I'm with Connell Foley, law firm Connell Foley. Last time I was here, I was with Brown, Duke and Fogels. Now it's different, but anyway, same person.
I'm Matt Merrill, I'm from PW Grocer Consulting, we're the engineers of the project.
I'm John Schneider with McBride Consulting, and we're part of the team working on public outreach. And just by the way, on a, on an off note, having worked 20 years ago on the FIM plan when I worked for Tim Bishop, it was fascinating. It's like, it was a real like walk down memory lane, so.
It's been, it's been going on since.
It's like a Groundhog Day.
Since the early 1960s, believe it or not.
Well, and I remember talking back in the day with Fred Thiel and Skippeany, and they were, they're things from the sixth, I mean, it's, yes, anyway, it was a walk down memory lane.
It's actually happening now.
So thank you.
That was one of the questions the other day. Is this actually happening? I'm like, yeah, it's actually happening.
It's been on geological times.
Rebecca Secar, I'm also with McBride, also have some easement in FIM experience myself, so also enjoy the conversation.
Good morning, Greg Levine with McBride Consulting.
So just, I'll just say a couple of words on context. So when we were here last time, so the ownership of this former mine site, it's the former West Hampton mining site, it was subject to enforcement with DEC. So there were piles of materials there that were illegally dumped, not managed properly, so they were just sitting there, so it's fallow. Our client came in, there's no connection to the prior ownership, they did not put those piles, but the idea was they negotiated, and I was involved in it, that's why I know, we negotiated it with the DEC, a consent order, to allow us to process the material that's there, remove it, dispose of it properly, and fill the hole. So that was the original context of the consent order with DEC. DEC said, that's great, we love the idea, however, you need to also apply as a condition of the consent order, which we can share, you must apply for a grade adjustment permit pursuant to Part 360 of DEC regulations. So that grade adjustment permit application just went in, and there was a public hearing on it. And the idea is that that will be permitted, the grade adjustment will be permitted by the state DEC, and that's why it's going through the secret review under the state's program, to allow the hole to be filled up. But as part of that, there's a processing component, so it's not just fill it up with clean material, it's process material, make sure the clean goes in the hole, anything bad gets removed, et cetera. So that's the technical aspect of it, but that's an interim facility that will be on the site pursuant to a Part 360 grade adjustment permit for, then that's what's getting permitted. There's no separate facility, there's no subsequent redevelopment plan, and that was what was.
Right, and I'm sorry, and just for context, right now, the only, the only thing that, the only application that we are seeking is the Part 60, the Part 360 permit from the DEC.
Do you need anything from the Pine Barrens?
Yes.
Yeah.
To do that?
Oh.
They do think you need something from them.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
I was just there yesterday.
Okay.
It's in the core preservation.
It is in the core preservation area, so.
So to fill the hole.
So any, oh, just to be clear, any activity that's happening there now is being done on the consent order.
And I think we'd also wanna closely look at, like, that consent order is in compliance with state DEC, so jurisdictionally, I don't know what the commission could require at this time.
Well, it's a remediation effort under a consent order, so it's, yeah, it's exempt.
So we have one map on, one square, it's up there, Janice.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to remember which.
That's our recreational park up there, future recreational park.
Further east, Janice.
I think you had it before.
All of the railroad tracks.
Yeah, that's in there.
Right there. This and this and this, I mean, not that.
A little piece of that by the railroad.
You had the one labeled 76.
Yes, the one below the, yes, that.
And that little one, right?
Correct.
Just this and, yeah.
And they just recently bought the one you just highlighted before.
The Marie Wilkins.
Is that, John, is that Pete and some?
I'm sorry?
Is that Pete and some right there?
It's.
I didn't hear it.
Yeah.
That's all. So were there Pine Barrens credits attached to names?
So the concern with the. Like something that I know. Thinking, well, some things here are just that we, we also are in support of the cleanup efforts. It's to what end is the mine being filled back in for what? And that may be development, and that is subject to Pine Baron authorization because this is the Corps. The other side of this is also that the Pine Barrens Commission is concerned that this, the C and D component of the 360 permit requires their approval. And so that's something you can talk to them about.
Yeah.
Because we're not, and that's part of the community consternation, is that what is this? Bringing materials here to be tested is problematic to us, right? Like, we would want clean fill, obviously, but the testing and bringing potentially anything here in the Corps is at issue.
Yep, and it's not a retail C and D facility, just to be clear.
Yeah, I think we wanna hear more about the C and D component, and what is that? And what would you, you know, rather than us speaking for you, we would just, you should talk about it.
Sure, so a lot of development projects will already test the materials, so the majority of material we anticipate to be received at the facility will be tested prior to receipt at the facility. If there are like kind of smaller generating projects, we have a consolidation area proposed, and then the testing would occur on a 1.1 thousand yard basis in our plan. But the majority of materials would be qualified general fill under the old Part 360 regulations. They would be deemed that way prior to receipt at the facility. In addition, it would be clean concrete, brick, and natural stone materials, all of which are considered inert by DEC and would not need to be tested. So all the materials that, that will be brought to the site will be clean materials, they will be inert materials. And there's a small component in which the same materials that we're gonna be bringing in for this grade adjustment will synergize with the client's core business. So there is an aspect of. will synergize with the client's core business. So there is an aspect of repurposing maybe some of the clean concrete for use on their, their site projects. But like I said, most of this material will be qualified clean material before it comes in. So this shouldn't, it shouldn't be, uh, an issue of contamination, especially considering with the removal of the dredge spoils that are currently, uh, is being undergone on the property right now. The clients have.
Dredge spoils?
Uh, well, the, the existing materials that were deposited on the property from the previous owners, um, some of them were considered dredge spoils. Um, they exceeded the beneficial use criteria for reuse on the site. So the, in order to get, uh, a permit approved by D E C, they had to enter that consent order. The consent order required the removal of about twenty-six thousand yards of material after, after we did the testing. So these clients are looking to remove those materials and.
Twenty-six thousand yards.
Yeah, it's a, it's a considerable effort that they're gonna have to, for, to just get to kind of square one.
So what happened? This was a sand mine?
It was a sand mine that had a part three sixty registration with the state.
They abandoned it?
Um, well.
Without doing a reclamation plan?
It, that's, well, that gets interesting. I, I think in, I think the first permit was issued in nineteen eighty-four for the permit, for the, uh, mine permit. But as of right now, there was never, the reclamation was never complete. So it's still technically an active sand mine until the reclamation is complete. And this would be part of that reclamation.
But the prior owners got, but determinations, accepted material and never handled it and got rid of it the way they were supposed to pursuant to the vote. So it's out there.
It's still being viewed as an active sand mine?
It, it, well, it had, has not been reclaimed.
It has no permits.
It has no permit, but it hasn't been reclaimed. So if you were to look at like the D E C database, it would still be displayed on like the information mapper as an active sand mine because it hasn't been formally reclaimed.
When was the last time it was active? When was the last time it was active?
I think, uh, I mean, the consent order was two thousand nine, so it's, it's probably been thirteen years.
Yeah, I don't know what they've been doing.
So you can't mine sand there because you have no permit to mine sand.
No, that's not, no, that's not.
So you're basically trying to finish a reclamation project with the D E C. And then with the end goal of what?
Right now, there's no development proposed. So all the other, the reason it sat fallow for years is because everybody looked to try to get the reserves. Everybody else looked at it and said, oh, here's a mine, there's maybe some reserves there, let's try and get it, sell the reserves to pay for the reclamation. Right? That, that's, that was the game and that's why it didn't work. Our client doesn't do that. They're not mining people. They're land earth movers. So they have a lot of material that's clean that they can't find a home for. So they internally in their business can make an economic model where they can have, they have a home for a lot of material. And that's different than a lot of the other economic, you know, they were looking at it like, okay, how many thousand cubic yards of sand are left and maybe we can sell that? And that's not their business model.
So we wanna fill this, this big hole.
That's what's distinct. Fill the hole because they can make it work because that's part of their business, they're earth movers.
But then at the, what's the end of, after?
They don't have, right now, it's a zoned residential, so it's.
Or it's in the core.
It's in the core preservation and they don't have.
And are there Pine Barrens credits intact on this?
Yeah.
Yes, there would be development rights.
There's development rights.
Um.
I mean, you know, P, Pine Baron credits would have to be issued.
So typically the property would not be considered developable. It's in the core.
Right.
It has transferable rights.
Yeah, we haven't looked at, you know, the extent.
So, but normally these properties would then revert to some sort of natural state. Um.
Usually you sort of stabilize the slopes, right? Have a replanting or revegetation. And what's the usual grade adjustment with a mine? Is it, they vary across the board or?
Whatever plan, yeah, whatever.
Yeah.
So your grade adjustment is, is how much and, and can you describe that? Like the extent of what you're looking at?
And you're not trying to turn it to a transfer station?
No, we can't. Yeah, we can't. It's not even.
Yeah, I don't know why that.
Question I had.
The transfer station's down the road.
Do you anticipate any processing? You know, the inert material, are you gonna?
Well, maybe screening or crushing of the material.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, there will be screening and crushing of the soils and, and concrete.
That would be soil for the property not to be taken off the property?
Uh, there is, there is a small amount of soil that they think that they might need a soil blend for a project. They might wanna divert some of that material. But the vast majority of the material will be used in the grade adjustment.
But the materials that are brought in are also subject to the D E C chain of custody rules and all of that.
Yes, so, so, so what I also wanted to kind of, I, I used to work for D E C. I was, uh, an inspector for the solid waste division. And, and projects like these were, were, I'm not gonna say they were common, but there are probably, I, I was the monitor in Kings Park. There was two or three facilities in Kings Park. D E C is very involved in these kinds of projects. Um, the way it works is there will be individual loads staged from each truck along the periphery of, of the mine, uh, slope. We would flag each, we have a log book for each load that comes in. We have a flag that's put in each individual load. Each load will be inspected by a D E C inspector and approved prior to being incorporated into the grade adjustment. So there is a very high level of oversight by D E C. They will be at the site regularly. Um, the client has committed to an environmental monitor program, which means that they have to actually pay an additional fee. Usually these inspections by D E C are, are part of your permit. But for these guys, they're gonna actually pay an additional fee to have more frequent monitoring so that D E C can come to the site once or twice a week to inspect those loads before they're able to incorporate.
Which allows them to move faster.
Yeah, that too.
Just cameras.
Just cameras, yeah.
There's like Wi-Fi hookups and it's heavily monitored.
Can you describe the extent of the, you know, act, you know?
The, the grade adjustment?
Yeah.
So, so it's pretty much to the exist, the previously existing grade, there's a slight pitch on the property, but, uh, the depth, I think ranges between like twenty-eight and thirty-five feet or so throughout the property. So they would be looking to, uh, and do the grade adjustment so that it's pretty much at the natural grade. Although we do recognize that we wanna be timely with this five-year limit. And that based on potential development down the road, we may want to reduce, we may want to continue to have a, a bit of a depression uh, on the property, but right now, as proposed to D E C, it's, it's too great, existed great.
And that's the thing, the potential development part is, is a hardship to the Pine Barrens Commission. Like, there is no potential development.
Right.
Like, you just have to be really clear on that. Like, that, that's the thing about that. Other than agriculture, right?
Right.
Or, um, I think they may entertain some type of solar, potentially. Uh, at least we do.
Yeah, that's what's written in our plan. It's, it's, uh, alternative energy is, was a part of it. And I think maybe, maybe there's a potential reference to cold storage because it was during COVID and there was the vaccines and the requirement for more cold storage facilities. It was an idea and they've had discussions with you guys, I think, about, um, you know, hemp farming or the dirt bike tracks in the past.
Yes.
Yeah, that would have to come from the town. That's not from us. Like, we don't have any development proposed.
We, we spoke like things like biochar, things that are sustainable in nature.
Right.
Probably more, more likely to be acceptable and certainly Pine Baron regulation and our own regulations, that would, that probably would be the only thing acceptable to do there. But to get it to that point is important and how you're doing that, what the content of the fill and things like that. I want the community to understand that, you know, the process here is not, oh, we're just gonna bring a bucket and fill it up. That's not how it works. So we wanna be sure that we're protecting our groundwater, uh, in that respect. And that's why, why you're doing it. So I'm, I'm paraphrasing for you. I, I'm, you're, I'm, I'm getting a lot of head nods, so I, I hope that's okay to say it that way.
And the other concern is sort of truck traffic for the community. Can you speak to that? Because we really don't want people to be having, you know, tons of trucks and activity.
It's a tough entrance in the, the aggressive sort of.
Day in and day out, you know, uh, how are we going to plan for that? And the D E C is the, uh, lead agency here because the town has no permitting here. And you haven't applied for a hardship to the Pine Barrens, so there is no other, you know, agency that would be lead agency, but we would like D E C to ensure the truck, truck.
So we took a hard look at that and Matt couldn't speak to that. Or, I mean, we have a letter from B H B.
Right, I was gonna say, um, there was a recent study performed by B H B comparing it to background traffic levels on, on, uh, Old Country Road. And the determination was, I think it was, was it less than a?
It's less than one percent. We'll share you the letter. We were actually submitting it today. So we had, uh, B H B, the traffic consultant, look at all the background traffic, look what this incremental increase, even assuming, y- y- when you're doing the secret review, you have to assume the worst, right? We're assuming the most traffic, the most use. May or may not be to that level, but assuming that it's worse, it's still like this, it was less than one percent. It, whatever it was, it didn't rise to the level even warranting, um, a traffic study or it, it is certainly not a significant impact, so. And we talked about that with D E C.
Are there, Jazz refreshed my memory. Are there, there's materials that were put there a long time ago that are above grade? And that's part of what you were talking about, to have those tested, see if they could be either ground or?
Right, all, all the materials on the site, I think that there were a hundred thousand yards of material above grade. They were tested on a one per one thousand frequency. So these guys did a hundred samples, uh, on that material. Part of what was, we had to do when we were brought onto the team was analyze that information, identify the potentially contaminated materials or if that exceed the beneficial use criteria. Um, and then we, we got a plan approved by D E C to remove, uh, by drawing out the hotspots and based on visual confirmation in the field. Um, and then place that material in what we call the consolidation staging area. Essentially made a concrete tipping bunker. They put all that material in there and they're keeping that material covered until, um, well, they have to remove it at a frequency that's prescribed in the consent order with D E C. I believe it's at this point, I don't know if it's two fifty a week or five hundred a week, but.
Oh, it's in the, in the order.
So, uh, the, the vision is not trucks coming in and out on a perpetual basis?
No, they wanna consolidate that. So, so when this operation becomes fully operational, they're gonna be bringing the material in. They're gonna be using those same trucks loading the materials that were, uh, impacted from, and in that consolidation area, put into the trucks and sent to the disposal facility. So there's only gonna be the trucks coming in with the clean beneficial use materials and coming out with the waste.
So, Jazz, I have a question for you. So we really have, there's no permits needed from us. We really have no say in this. Like, you're involving us to let us know what's going on at the site, pretty much. So I mean, I'm just asking this question for the, for the purpose of, if the community says to us, we don't want this, we're not permitting anything. Like, it's not.
Well, that's the thing, right? So when someone comes to us with an, uh, uh, so ordered, you know, consent order from a judge.
It's not our project.
We typically say, okay, you know, have at it. Uh, they came to us about a temporary trailer. Um, we don't provide building permits for temporary trailers. We told them to go to the health department, so that is important that that is all insured to be correct. Um, the, a building permit for a temp, for a temporary trailer, we don't do. It is a nice one. I saw a picture and saw it. Um, but, uh, because that would be development. Uh, and the Pine Barrens would be interested in that. So they would like to speak to you about that. You know, like, if that's not temporary, then that's part of your, I think we just need, and I, and I think they agree, the Pine Baron Commission and, and the, uh, as you know, the chair is the regional assistant, regional director for D E C, is he's gonna look at that consent order and how that jives with the hardship for, for the Pine Barrens. So that both of those state agencies are on the same page, you know, how to handle that. Um, and they, and that's really a state issue. So for us, we, we, we're kinda, we can't do anything because it's the core. So we don't have any ability to, like, require a site plan or, you know, things along those lines are not allowable.
I just want that clear to the community. So they're not coming to us saying, we don't want this in our neighborhood. Stop it. Like, there's nothing for us to stop.
Right, so this is a, a state level initiative to effectuate a cleanup, but it is concerning in and of, we don't want, to what end? We wanna understand what that is. If you are having an end in mind, then you should make that hardship permit and we should all be aware of what that is.
Right. True. Right.
So everybody knows what's what. Um, if there is no end and it's just all, the end is a reclamation and that's the end of it?
That's the end. We, we can't, um, and, and just so you know, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the issues you're raising were raised by the D E C
Good.
on our call this week. So those, so that's actually part of this process. So we're gonna communicate what we learned here with D E C and make sure. Cause the issue was, is there another part three sixty facilities? Is there a C and D facility? Is this gonna be a standalone facility? And that's not the model. That's just not the model. And that's what I think what everybody's keying out.
Yeah, we don't want this to be a new business use that goes on.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, and then twenty years, yeah.
There's an, there's an end date. Like, there's a five-year, it's done.
There's a, it's a, right. It's not, these permits are for terms.
This is a reclamation plan.
Right, it's a, right, it's a termed permit.
And D E C, well, and they have, there's a life of a mine.
Right.
And the end of the life is supposed to be reclamation. Now, the prior owner didn't do the reclamation plan, so you're doing that.
This works for this client.
I think the town would likely view that as the mine is being closed. Mine is being terminated and reclaimed and that's all in the D E C's purview. What happens after it's been reclaimed, it's in the Pine Barrens core and you guys need to look at what those hardship standards are. They're not going to be easy to get a different use on that property, but I'm not saying impossible, but it, but certainly challenging.
Well, I, I just, just to clarify again, and thank you, Cindy, because the community is one of the reasons I asked for you guys to be here because there was a lot of confusion. To me, what you're doing is, there's a sand mine that's not an operational sand mine, but it, it was at one time. It's been sitting there for a long time. Uh, it was, it was a dump site from the past with materials that we haven't identified. It's been there for a long time. This is an opportunity for the D E C to come do its job, uh, which is to look at those materials, identify what is, shouldn't be there and take it away. And what should be there, put it back to help to, to reclaim the mine. And it's not, it's not to reclaim it as an operational mine, it's basically to shut it down, turn it back into what it was originally as best as possible, reclaim the land and take away some of these pollutants that have been sitting there for years and years and years and years. Uh, and, and we have the D E C doing that job and we're kinda watching as a town as this happens.
Well, yeah, we're, we're like listed as an involved agency, they're a lead agency, but I think that we can still identify all the issues and give it to them. And they're going to have to do that secret analysis. Like you said, you have a letter on traffic. We would say traffic's a definite concern, noise, dust, anything related to the neighborhood and people.
How is that property accessed? That's up against the railroad tracks. Did you get the truck, how do you get the trucks in and out?
Same way that it's been going for whatever, you know.
Is there an access road?
Yeah, there's an access road.
There's a crossing.
Along the railroad tracks or?
It's, it, no.
Goes a little north of there.
Parallel to the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
You cross the tracks and then you kinda go through the woods a little.
Yeah, and we know, I mean, and we know a neighbor complaining.
Yeah, there's a, um, yeah, we, we all receive those documents. And, um, Mr. Gaza has expressed his, uh, concerns. And he is that, uh, you know, there's some purported access issues, so.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a final answer. We're drafting an opinion and, you know, we'll clarify. I mean, certainly we believe we have access. Um, it's not just our site that has access over that same road. There's a residence that also has access.
It could be the D E C requiring that as well, so we're factored out.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yep, I just don't have a specific answer for you now. I mean, obviously our positions, we certainly have access.
Well, you gotta be bringing in all those trucks of material in and out.
And, and what is that schedule in and out? You know, we keep hearing like it's a lot, but then you just said it's not. Is, what is the, uh?
Well, we have the, yeah, we have the specifics.
Yeah.
Like a number of trucks?
Yeah, like, you know, do you have, and does it have to be so many? Like, what's, why is it, I heard a lot, but maybe it's not that much, so you can tell us.
So it's, it's, what we propose is an average of thirty-five trucks per day, which is three and a half trucks an hour over the ten-hour working day. Um, the maximum we propose at the site would be fifty trucks, fifty trucks being five trucks an hour. Um, nope. That, I, I don't feel like that's, as, as evidenced by the V H B traffic study, it's, it's not really a significant impact to the community as defined by, by the New York State D E C standards that are, you know, in the E A F and, but I, I, you know, I, I don't know how to kind of explain if, it's thirty-five trucks. It, it, to me.
So how long of a period?
It's, it's going to be over the five-year permit, so it would be.
So for five years, thirty trucks a day?
Yeah.
I live on a road with an active mine and I can tell you that the worst part is when they come out full and there will be no trucks coming out full from this site, I'm imagining.
Well, the initial part, when they're removing the bad stuff.
Oh, when they're removing, that's when they're, they're bringing in.
But that's a limited amount, but there will be.
It won't be. But, cause I mean, that's honestly, that's the worst part, when you get stuck behind a full truck trying to get up to speed. Other than that.
So mostly there'll be full trucks coming in, right? You're bringing material in.
Yes.
But then you'd be.
But then you're gonna be removing the waste over the, I think it's only instructed over less than two years to remove the twenty-six thousand yards of material. I, I wanna say it's about a year and a half. So there would only be waste coming out of the facility for the first year and a half to remove the, um, potentially contaminated material or the.
Where is that material gonna end up?
Um, it's going to go to an authorized facility. I, what we've been, who we've been working with is Basilico. They have a wash plan over in Farmingdale. Um, they can accept materials that exceed beneficial use criteria. Essentially what they do is, is wash away the silts and clays and have clean sand residuals and then they reuse that in their concrete production.
Okay. So twenty-six thousand yards is coming out?
Mm-hmm.
And twenty-six thousand plus yards is going in?
Uh, the number over the five years will be about eight hundred thousand cubic yards.
Coming in.
Coming in to, to, to fill the hole, yeah.
Wow. It's all the water material. And so this company that you're working for has that much material?
Yeah.
Clean material that it wants to. Clean material that it wants to get rid of?
Well, over projects. Yeah, over projects, they don't, not like right now they have that amount of material, but, you know, they have told me that on several occasions, somebody approaches them, I have fifty thousand yards of clean fill. I, I want to be able to take it somewhere, do you have a use for it? We don't have the permit yet, so we can't accept that material. But these, these projects, it'll, it'll come in bunches like that, we're expecting thirty, fifty thousand yards from individual projects.
Tested previously, not being brought and decided, oh wait, this is actually contaminated, we're going to bring it out?
Yes, yes. No, of that scale, generally, I mean.
Okay. That's important.
Yes, generally D E C has a provision that if a project generates more than three hundred cubic yards, it needs to be qualified before it's received at the site. So those kinds of large projects, which is where going to be the vast majority of the materials that are going to be received at the site will be tested. At the generating site prior to being shipped to the facility.
And then shipped with a chain of custody, so that there's.
Yep, yep, there will be a tracking documents that we have proposed for it.
Just want to stress that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anything, you said there's residences on the road that goes in and then there hasn't been any activity at the site for thirteen years? And obviously that number of trucks will put an undue burden on that road, is there a plan to, you know, fix that road or improve it once you're done? Or through the course of the time you're there?
There'll be the, there's an unpaved roadway, right now, that Gaza's issue.
Okay.
Well, to access that, there's an, there's an M S L triangle.
Yeah.
And then you're going to have to deal with the M T A as well, I'm sure, because you need to cross that, that crossing at some point with those weights. I would just, you know, I'm not sure what that would go for there, but right now there is traffic going in and out of there.
Is the D E C considering what you want to do as a reclamation project or as a waste facility?
Grade adjustment under part three sixty, that's what they're.
Kind of defines it both.
Yeah, it's a weird hybrid because.
You want to say, cause if you looked at it, okay, you, you need a place for fill to go.
Right.
It's a material, so you're sort of dump, it's a dump in a way, you're dumping it in the hole there.
Right.
Um, and so that, the D E C would regulate that as sort of a landfill site, not for M S W but for fill.
Right.
Um, yet if it was a reclamation, we would look at it as just a continuation of the mine toward the life of mine, not as a different use. So that's kind of, I'm curious, has the D E C is viewing it as a different use or as just a reclaiming of a mine? And with the mine, the reclamation plan being to fill the hole?
It's kind of both, technically, because you have the, the outstanding, like I said, it's, it's not a reclaimed mine, so they have to perform the reclamation. But at the same time, a part three sixty permit, a part three sixty permit is a solid waste management facility permit. There are different categories for different kinds of facilities that are regulated by part three sixty. One of them would be a landfill, the landfill is in the part three sixty-two regulations, this is a part three sixty seven, point one seven, nonspecific facility. When, when, when they're doing these, like a grade adjustment permit, they don't consider it a landfill if it's consisting of purely clean and inert materials. Cause right now ordinarily a landfill would have a liner and except, you know.
Normally a reclamation plan wouldn't require you to fill the hole, but you guys.
Right, because there'd just be the slopes, you'd just reclaim the slopes, right.
Stabilized slopes and plant.
But what you do have is materials that are unidentified.
Koi pond.
Correct, you have to ban stuff, you have to get rid of that.
To me, that's a benefit, because it's been there for so long, we're going to be able to, we're going to be able to at least remove that material.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the problem, it's not, it's not only that they not reclaim, but they.
Well, they fill.
But there's got to be a community, eight hundred thousand cubic yards of material coming in over five years, it's definitely a, got to be a community impact. You know, people are going to want to know about dust, people are going to want to know about trucks and impacts to roads, particularly driveways and things like that, so.
Yep.
I was just going to say, I mean, we, in the, in the, excuse me, application though, it is explicit to address all of these things, traffic, noise, dust, what's going in, how it's going to be sorted. So, you know, we're here today sort of very high level describing what's happening, but, you know, for months now, there's been this extent, there's a soil management plan. I mean, everything that needs to be studied has been studied, there's been a supplemental traffic. So to the extent that this is information has been available to, you know, any involved agency as well as the public and we had a public hearing. We provided feedback from a public hearing to D E C, that they're reviewing that and the questions that were submitted, there's been, there's been a very open level of communication, yeah.
No, I'm not questioning that, it's just whether it's a change of use and whether that has the necessary sign offs from the town and the Pine Barrens.
Yeah, cause it's sort of a C and D operation is part of that, is a C and D permit.
Yeah, well, I'd like to view it as just a reclamation project, you know, reclamation project.
But it's C and D to facilitate the reclamation, I mean, we're not C and D for, for retail, we're not, there's all a lot of things, it's not. And the thing it is, is that the C and D facilitates this, this grade adjustment, right, and that is, that is it, that's to the extent necessary.
And who decides how high it goes up, like where against, where is the grade?
Right, cause I have to think about other mines as well, might want similar relief.
Like how do you, you know, just the grade of existing grade or natural grade is the target or, you know, like?
Well, just to be clear, this is not an operating mine, it was a long time ago, but there's no permitted.
Right.
Yep, not only that, but it actually brought bad stuff in.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah.
So how do we determine, right now the goal is to grade.
To grade, and that's based on, there's, there's two different heights on each side of the pit, I believe on one side it's like forty-three feet A M S L. And on the other side it's forty-one, so depending on, on where we're filling to, it's, it's varying from thirty-three to forty-one. And there will be just a consistent grade that goes across, so that you're, you're matching the existing grades at the top of, you know, the mine pit.
And that's part of your permit with the D E C?
Yes, yeah.
What's the benefit of bringing it up to grade? If you're not, if you don't know what you're using.
Well, that's, we have material, that's the business model, I mean, we're not, they're not hiding that at all, that's the business model that works. If it was trying to get, scavenge the remaining reserves, that, obviously that model didn't work and that's why it sat there with the contaminated material for, you know, years. So this model works.
It's sort of the opposite of mining.
It's, it really is, and that's why you've seen, I know that several other mining operators had been through that site several times. And it just never could make it financially feasible.
What if someone said, well, we only want you to fill it up halfway or something like that?
I mean, I think they're open to it, you know what I mean, if, if, if there was an opportunity, right now the goal is that's their home for it, that's how they make the financial aspects of this work. If the town came in and said, okay, we have, we're going to rezone, we're going to do something else, I think they're open to other recommendations, but that's not permissible right now, you know. So certainly open to.
To the point right now, just to get it to grade and let it go back to.
Yeah, we're constrained by what's permitted, you know, so.
And again, right now the project is the project, all it is, is it's reclamation, it's bringing it to grade and there really is no.
We've talked about.
There's no second project.
There's no second project.
At the end of this regrading plan, did the D E C signing off, has that been reclaimed at that point?
Yeah, not reclaimed, the permit would be closed, right?
Well, the permit, the solid waste management facility will be closed, but also the mining.
Would they delist, I guess you're right.
Yeah, it would be delisted.
So they would accept it as part of the reclamation of the way, so it could be used, if you can get permit to do something else, at that point it could be used for something else?
Yes.
I'd.
It'll be grass surface at the end?
Uh, that wasn't explicitly written in the plan, but it can certainly be.
Well, the core of Pine Barrens, they would want a plan, that's the other side of this, you know, they really would want to be involved in, you know, what the rehabilitation goals are there.
And stormwater management. That is a trough area there too, it's pretty, it's kind of an interesting geological.
Can those five year permits be extended?
Yes, they, they could ordinarily, it'd just be a permit renewal from D E C, which would be less restrictive, it wouldn't be another public comment per se in that instant, uh, instance, but.
So then the target of that many trucks, like why not do, you know, sort of less over time, but if you know that you can get extended, you know what I mean, period? You know what I mean, so that it's less impactful?
It's going to be supply and demand essentially, right?
Well, yeah, that's why we have a fifty truck peak and a thirty-five truck average, because we don't anticipate to be able to regularly receive materials on a daily basis at that level. It's going to have to come based upon, you know, they get that contract for fifty thousand yards, they're going to bring that in, no more than the fifty truck max.
Not too cheap.
But there will be times where there might not be another generating project bringing material and there will be kind of lapses in, in materials being received at the site.
I have had some conversations with the regional attorney for D E C, but what, what is their motivation in this project, is such, is the removal of the contaminated soils? That's their main goal, I mean, as far as regrading, is it something, I'm sorry, you know, former employee there, and it said maybe this might be a D E C question, but. Regrading, is that something, is that a benefit, do they look at that as a beneficial thing or is that just, is that more for the motivation of the property owner?
Um, question, I, I don't think that there's like an explicit benefit, but you do, I think that it also needs to be considered that when these guys are removing twenty-six thousand yards of material. I mean, a conservative estimate would be for trucking to a facility like Basilico and disposal would be a hundred dollars a ton, and so these guys are going to have to invest.
Right.
Almost three million dollars in disposal and trucking.
And that's important to the D E C to get this material out.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
I see there's a benefit to the town, Jim, in some ways, obviously, that we can get rid of some of these materials.
Oh, yeah, no question, yeah.
But also in addition to that, when we start looking at, at, at areas like this where we want to do sustainable projects, anything from solar to biochar, whatever, whatever that might be. Part of that has to be graded and I, you know, this could be a model perhaps to, as a way to do that.
And I know we've talked about some other end uses.
There's no substation area, is there?
We did, but then we defined it as the core, so that was the.
Right, right, you talked about warehouses.
We looked already.
Left it in the hole.
We've had, we've had discussions on a lot of different end uses on this property and then of course complicating it now is the fact that it's in the core. We talked about warehouses, we talked about other types of.
When we initially, well, for any sand mine, we were saying if they, we had a path away from mining, what are legitimate uses that people need? Like a lot of landscapers need yard space, a lot of people need, you know, certain different things, so we were talking about that across the board, across the town. To motivate places like Sand Land or others to, to, when they're done, you know, to move to different uses. Those places are not necessarily in the core like this, so it's a little different here. Um, and that requires an added level of scrutiny and permission from the Pine Barrens Commission. So, and that's a whole hardship and there must be a public benefit involved in order for them to, to.
Yeah.
What I've seen in almost every sand mine that I've been dealing with, is the reclamation ends up being some type of lake or ponds, fishing ponds. Everybody seems to be punching into the groundwater and, you know, if it was in Manaville, whether it's been in Middle Island, whether it's been, that's the plane on the property is pretty close to here.
Yeah, the irony, is it not too far from there, that, that happened?
Yeah, Hundred Timery Mix is, that's the, the end game.
And now the complaint is that everyone's just skiing on it, so, you know.
I don't think it has, it really has, I haven't seen a mine that's actually fit, done yet. I've seen that there's a, there's a, two significant mines, one in Middle Island, one in Manaville, which they, they are lakes essentially, but they're still mining them. There's no recreational activity going on just yet, I don't, that I'm aware of.
Jim, just so you know, I, I'm familiar with the facility in Riverhead, it was Island Water Park, it's on twenty-five. That is, was a mine land.
Was it?
Yeah, yeah.
First question?
No, Island Water Park down by Abcalth.
Yeah, down by the ball field, if you go back past that ball field.
The New Disney World.
Their former mine that was back there and their intention was to mine the groundwater and now turn it into, you know, an attraction with.
That's an indoor water facility?
Well, they're going to have an indoor component, but then there's also, there's actually a, a mined lake that they are planning to have, I think, like a zip line kind of pull people across.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been some jokes, they want to call it splish slap.
I've seen all sorts of plans wrapped tail over the years, ski, ski, indoor ski mountains.
So, all right.
So, yeah, you know, again, you know, you know, kind of appreciate, you know, the opportunity to come in and again, we're, you know, you know, we're trying to be, you know, as, you know, again, appreciate the opportunity to continue talking with the town and any residents. And again, we're not, you know, we, you know, but we get it, right, when there's, people see trucks, people, you know, people have questions. So we're, you know, we're going to be, you know, you know, so again, appreciate the opportunity to come, present information, take your questions. You know, we tried to be here as, as soon as we possibly could, you know, because we, we want to be transparent as we go forward. If questions arise, you know, we'll certainly do our part to, you know, to work with, you know, not only the D E C, but, you know, everyone in the community. And, you know, if you hear of anything, you know, Bill is, you know, you know, you know how to get ahold of the team. You know, again, we're happy to answer any questions, be out there and, you know, continue to work with the town and the community, so thank you so much.
Thank you for coming here and letting us better understand the project and answering questions. I'm still sort of viewing it as a reclamation project and that's beneficial, because we have an abandoned mine and you're restoring it. So to some future, we don't know what the future holds, but there, there definitely going to be community impacts to the project, but.
D E C hasn't done a secret determination yet though, right?
They have not, they, we spoke to them last week, we talked about the traffic, is we're going to be submitting, and we'll copy you and everything, just, it's all public, obviously, but we'll make it fast track it, we can just copy you.
Thank you.
Um, but yeah, they had asked about traffic and then we had V H B do a traffic analysis, so we're submitting that.
Yeah. So again, so to me, this is a reclamation project, it's just a particular one that brings it up to grade rather than create a lake somewhere. But, you know, if they're viewing it differently than that, if the town views it differently than that, you know, it could complicate things. But at least through the lens I'm looking at it, it just seems like an abandoned sand mine that's being restored to some more usable property. So for whatever reason, whether it's for preservation down the road or recreation down the road, I, I don't know, we'll find it, find that out later.
Yeah, we don't have any, yeah. And to, and to make sure that we can take the, the contaminated material off site, so it really, you know, that, I mean, again, in terms of.
Yeah, and that's important too. It's a cleanup as well.
You know what George kept saying about the model, it's, it's making sure that we have a model that allows us to fund, you know, the millions of dollars it takes to, to take that material off.
Actually take that off, that's why it failed, if nobody else had the model that worked to pay for that.
Right, that's really, I thank you for bringing that back up.
Cause, cause, cause but for, but for that, you, this material, you know, again, if everyone just said, hey, you know what, let's just call it a day, scrap the whole thing, everyone walks away. You still have thousands, you know, tens of thousands of kilometers of, of contaminated material.
Good luck, the prior owners would be there with the piles of stuff.
So as part of this, that material will be coming off, so that is really the heart of what is a reclamation project.
That's really important.
No, I know, I know, and I know that the D E C.
So it's an environmental cleanup project as well.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
And it's also listed in our, in the original site list that.
Oh, really? So, yeah, that's really important, thank you for bringing that up as well.
I think in as much as you can meet with the community and maybe see, see people and, and others, you know, to talk through some of the logistics, that would be very helpful to us, right?
The devil's going to be the monitoring of what's coming in and, you know, making sure, because we've all.
Fortunately, you can't use the material.
We've all experienced, you know, not so great situations.
Well, this is extreme.
Trying to connect.
It's, it's like there's wifi, there's cameras, there's, yeah, it's pretty expensive. It was actually expensive.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Keep us in the loop, John?
Yep, absolutely.
We'll, we'll copy.
And we had some residents, I'm sure, watching, they were made aware of this today, which was helpful, I'm sure we have some other questions, so.
Absolutely, thank you so much, thank you everybody.
Thank you.
So, any other quick updates, because I have, I sort of have to run right now to another event.
Yeah, two quick things, Youth Bureau has their last teen night next Wednesday at Loveland Park. If you want to play basketball, participate in the barbecue or even joust that night, you can, you can come down, grade seven through twelve. Their new fall brochure is out and last, tonight's concert at Good Ground Park starts at six P M, not seven.
Okay, Chris Pine?
Nina, et cetera.
Dow State.
Dow State, sorry.
The official state sport of Maryland.
Really? I thought it was the official.
Can't make it up.
Town board activity.
I, I thought it was Monty Python, but.
Anybody, anyone else? All right, I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session.
Second.
And on acquisitions, confidential legal advice, contracts, personnel, so we have a pretty lengthy executive session agenda. Seconded by Councilman Vouliot, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're returned.